Welcome to Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for September 26, 2019. First order is salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Okay, Elise is not with us tonight. She's home ill and has been ill for two or three days and won't be back until she is feeling better. So, okay, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda?
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
So we actually have two. We're looking for the 14th and the 19th.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the 14th and the 19th. And the 19th was it?
Yep.
Yeah, the 14th was...
Yeah, that's right, because, yeah, okay, the 14th and the 19th.
Okay, I'll second it. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February 14th and 19th. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor? All opposed? Department heads and committee chair updates. About Forestry Commission, forestry and conservation. One once?
So I'm not sure that this is going real well, and I'm not saying, I mean, short of making a whole lot more work for myself and my office, I mean, so we sent out the schedules and this isn't just on forest conservation, as you can see underneath, we've got a few pending. I mean, they're just not coming.
Okay, well...
Some call, some don't, some show, some don't.
So we can't give an update on how things are going with the forest and conservation? I do know District Two, Joe?
I spoke to him today.
I did too. His, is it his in-laws that live in North Berwick?
Yes.
Yes. They've had a lot of trees come down and the power is, the power going to the house is down and he's over there trying to put pieces back together tonight, so...
Animal Control has also spoken to me. He's dealing with some health issues as well, so I've asked him not to come.
Okay, okay. And Cemetery is pending rescheduling, so... Warrant and Finance Committee, I haven't skipped you. I wouldn't do that.
Rawlins Waterhouse, Warrant and Finance, I will quickly give you an update on Cemetery Committee. Cemetery Committee is going to have to be postponed for quite a while, I would imagine. Lois Misshu is extremely ill. She has a doctor's appointment tomorrow and maybe I'll find out some more information after that.
I hope all goes well for her.
I think, I think it's that weird virus flu thing that's going around, you know, that takes you three weeks to get rid of.
Yep, okay.
So, that being said, Cemetery Committee is...
Okay.
So nothing on Thursday?
Warrant Finance, Warrant Finance is busy, busy, busy. We had our meeting last night for the upcoming special town meeting, the article that was proposed, it was discussed. Members of the committee voiced their concerns and a couple of people from the audience also voiced some concerns and spoke. One of them was the interim road commissioner. All good points. After the discussion was done, a vote was called and the measure was ought not to pass. It was not supported primarily because, number one, they don't feel there's enough information presented in the article itself. In other words, what are you gonna do? Who's gonna choose the road commissioners if you're going to appoint them? What criteria are you using, et cetera, et cetera? People want to know this information. The vote was five to one, five noes, one yes. And...
Okay.
As far as the other things that are going on with Warrant Finance, I've attended one of the last school budget meetings. I will be attending the next two that they have scheduled, only because I want to make sure that Warrant Finance is represented. We did have some weather that affected whether or not somebody went to the meeting, so, in any case, school budget is looking very good. They are very, very open. It is a line item budget which is required by the state for the majority of what they're doing, and they have no problems at all, and I love the process. And that's it for Warrant Finance.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other department heads or committee chairs? Move on to old business. Action Plan, Maine Municipal Association.
So we made some progress from last week. The transportation employees were in on Friday and we sat down and did our fire extinguisher training online through Maine Municipal. They also got the prices for the fencing that's going to be, the insurance company is requiring to go across where the drop is, and it looks like they're going to be able to support that out of the current year's budget, because some of his tipping numbers were, came in lower, so that's good. As far as the fire department, I think we're still waiting on just that one item, and I think Kim is going to plan on going over next week to walk through everything else so that we can get this turned back over.
Sounds good. Okay, 1920, proposed a budget.
So we're in pretty good shape as far as what Michelle is waiting for. We're still waiting for the number from Waterboro.
Yes, I have an email sent out, so we're just waiting.
Yeah, she's sent a couple, too. I'm not sure why nobody wants to reply with how much money they, I mean, they want the money from the town, right?
Should be pretty simple, yeah.
So, I did speak to the District One Road Commissioner, too. He's not able to make it tonight. He wanted to make sure that the board understood that, or knew that he, remember, because you weren't sure of what direction this was going with the road commissioner, we asked the road committee, the road commissioners, excuse me, to hold off on their budgets. We didn't turn them over to them to turn in, because if they were going to turn it into a public works director or they stayed town employees, then these selectmen would be working on the budget along with the department head, as they do in other areas. Because we're getting so late in the season and it looks like there's not a whole lot of support for that, we turned the budgets over and asked them to give us some preliminary numbers. They just got those last week. I know that it came up at a couple of meetings, at the meetings last night, and David wanted me to make sure that you knew that he met with, they met with Michelle yesterday for over two hours to go through it all. She's still pulling some numbers, but he thought there were some comments made at Warrant and Finance that they didn't have any numbers yet from them. My understanding is that Warrant and Finance doesn't have anybody's numbers yet, right? Okay, so maybe there was some confusion, we'll say on my part. Nevertheless, their budgets are in and done on time. We're still waiting for Joe, but Michelle's working with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. EMA Director, 911 Operator Job Description.
So I did speak to Code Enforcement in regards to the E-911 and tried to kind of get him to walk me through, have him walk me through exactly how it worked prior to when Mr. Cantanzie was the E-911 operator and what's required of it. Because Code Enforcement actually issues the house numbers, it may be an easy fix to incorporate that into their everyday doings. We're still working on the state and finding out what kind of requirements we have, how often we have to get information to the state and what that outside piece is, so I'm hoping by next week to have more answers for you. But as far as the EMA, that's much more detailed. We need an EMA Director, so I've got three or four different job descriptions that I've put together, or that my staff has put together, for you to look over, hoping that maybe via email we can pick one and we can get it advertised by next week. And the other piece was the stipend. I wasn't sure if the board was interested, was going to be changing that stipend or they were happy with it the way it was.
What is it right now, a thousand or 1,200 or 12?
A year, yeah.
I think it's 1,200, a hundred bucks a month.
Right, and that's the same as 911.
Right.
So if we can incorporate that into the, maybe a secretarial position downstairs, we may be able to save a little there.
Yeah, yeah, because we won't have to spend the money for that. We can up the EMA Director some.
And the, well, the other thing, I'm not sure, and I hope this is public information at this point, the Fire Chief has not decided at this point if he is interested in a reappointment from the Town of Acton, so whether he is or whether he isn't, if by chance he wasn't, I don't know if that's a time where you could incorporate the EMA Director into the Fire Chief, or maybe even if he did stay, maybe renegotiate the job description to some extent, because there is some downtime, because the EMA operator, I don't want to take away anything... Well, they're preparing.
Yeah, it doesn't really work to have it the same person.
Why is that?
In the case of an emergency...
So once they prepare, what do they do?
In the case of an emergency, it's two, it's two seats at a table.
Okay, so both of them would be there, yeah?
Right, they both would be there with totally separate jobs.
Right.
It's difficult for one person to do both those jobs.
And that makes sense. I guess I was thinking of just prepping for it, but if there's an actual disaster, that makes sense.
Yes, that's the problem. When I was Fire Chief, I was the EMA Director as well.
Okay.
It worked okay, but it boiled down to the fact that if there's a disaster, if there's an issue, it's the same person. The Fire Chief can be out doing, or at the table doing one, doing his specific job. Now he's got to try to do the EMA side as well, which is totally different, so...
And now that you say that, I mean, I guess I was thinking of it more from the paperwork piece, hoping the disaster never comes, but maybe a deputy or, I mean, trying to find somebody that, you know, will, that, it would interest, I mean, because it is a very low-paying position, but one of the most important...
Yeah, yeah, and there's a meet in a month involved with it.
In county, right?
Yes, yeah, training, you know, it's...
Sounds like you've got some background in it.
Yeah, I can't do it and be a selectman.
Is that, is that listed as one of the conflicts?
It is. That is, because that's another problem with another seat at the table.
Robin, right up your alley, Robin.
Robin can do it, yeah.
So we'll work on these, but if it's something that interests anybody in regards to really putting together the disaster preparedness for the community, we will be looking for somebody.
Yep, yep. Actually, I did get an email the other day from the state.
I saw that, you replied.
Yeah, I sent it back to you as well. The Balt Lake Dam, which I did an update on it, well, quite a number of years ago. Bill Cantanzie did an update on it. I'm actually going to see Bill tonight and I will ask him if he's got that, one that he did. I'll have him forward it back to me and just to get it done and get it back.
And the school must have a crisis response plan as well. Do they have one person that's the contact outside of the principal?
They should have.
All right. We'll run some advertisements, but if anybody knows, somebody that might be...
There should be a separate person and either a separate person from the Fire Department or someone that's not really active in the Fire Department. Having the fire background is definitely a help.
So we're looking at about a hundred dollars a month stipend at this point?
Yeah, at this point, unless we can...
Do we know the last time we've compared it to neighboring towns?
Aye.
Maybe I can call around and...
Yeah, years ago.
Okay, so I'll send you these email and let you look at them.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay, District One, and this is District One...
This is the old...
Yeah, the old District One.
District One Equipment, I guess I should say.
Yeah, I had a, I had a conversation with Scott last Friday, Scott Mooney, to see how he's making out getting the equipment back to us. He had hoped that your...
Southern Maine.
Southern Maine Communications would come up and take his radios out for him, but there were scheduling issues there, so he was checking to see if there was one of the town employees that works for one of the districts now could come up and just pull the radios.
And I know that was one of the other questions, is the town, is the town willing to pay to have Southern Maine?
Well, the town paid to put them in, so that's my only thought why. I mean, as far as Southern Maine goes, I think that's a stretch. Basically, if anybody's ever put a CB in a truck, it's as simple as pulling it back out. You pull the wires, you snip them, you know, on the, on the fire side of the cable, you know, so you still get a little bit of cable, you undo the antenna, you unscrew the bracket from the dash and you pull the radio out. It's pretty simple. You're going to leave the antennas, because they're not going to be any good anywhere else, so you're going to leave all that.
And then it was the sander.
He had hoped that, he had had hopes that one of the folks that was plowing, that was going to plow for the town was going to buy the truck and the, buy the truck with the sander on it and plow for the town, so the town sander would be used again there, but it doesn't look like anybody's going to be buying it, so he's going to work on getting that back down to us. And he does have some stuff that's buried under the snow that comes springtime.
Which so did the other road commissioner, right?
Yeah, which is barriers and cones and things of that nature.
And I think the only other thing they mentioned was the hay bales?
Yeah, I didn't mention the hay bales to him. I forgot that, so...
All right, so I'll leave it on there and we'll, you know, moves?
Yep. Okay. New business, Square Pond Watershed. A man with several hats.
That's what we do. Hi, I'm Lee Robert Tor, and this is my wife, Mary Ann, and I'm president of the Square Pond Improvement Association, and Mary Ann is the chairperson of the Steering Committee for the Watershed Survey Update. You're familiar with the program. 2007, Square Pond had the original watershed survey done, and we want to update it. Malsum Lake was done last year, I believe, so it's a collaborative effort between the DEP Water, Resource People, ASYCC. Betty Smith is going to be chairing the oversight of this whole process. We have paid technicians that are going to be involved and a lot of volunteers to support their effort. We did bring a map of the area. It's not only the...
You want to turn it for the camera?
Oh, there you go. It's not only the property owners along the lake, both the Acton and the Shapley side, but it's also all the property owners that their, their properties are part of the watershed of the lake itself, and it's a pure volunteer. Property owners are kind of left out if they don't want their property surveyed, but the purpose of the survey is to, is to identify erosion areas into the lake that need to be addressed, and it includes issues with roads as well. And what we're looking for are two things. Number one, we'd like to have volunteers to help us with the survey. It's a one-day survey. It's going to be on May 4th, and secondly, we'd like the opportunity to post the notices of the survey in your website, Facebook, and in the town offices, and open up to any questions you may have.
I know Betty contacted myself and Shapley Administrator in regards to getting all the property owners. We've been working with her to get all of the butters on certain roads around the area, because she's working on that, that piece for the mailing, so, I mean, if the board's okay with it, we'll certainly advertise and do whatever we can.
Yeah, whatever we can do.
That'd be great. The value of having volunteers other than the property owners themselves is when we go for grant money, it asks right on there, are there town volunteers, not just the property owners, so if we can get some people from the towns that both Shapley and Acton, we've made the request to Shapley as well, it just helps us in the grant process. If we find roads that have issues with the erosion, we'd obviously, would have some documentation from doing the survey. We'd come back and talk to the town that was involved, or if it's private roads, the property owners that are involved with the private roads. The grant money can help offset the cost of any construction issues related to, you know, repairing whatever is felt to be needed to deal with the erosion issues. Another benefit of getting some volunteers from the town.
So are you guys okay with...
Yes.
Definitely.
So if you want to send me exact verbiage, something I can copy and paste?
We'll send you a copy of the notice.
Okay, perfect, and get it advertised.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Warrant for the special town meeting, March 6. Thank you. Okay, Town of Acton, warrant to Robert Anderson, Constable in the Town of Acton, York. Greetings. In the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the intubants of said town of Acton qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Elementary School on March 6, 2019 at 7:00 in the evening to act on the following articles. Number one, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Number two, Article Two, to see if the town will vote to change the position of the two road commissioners from elected to appointed, effective July 1, 2019, for terms up to three years, up to three years each. Board of Selectmen recommend Article to approve the article as written, 3O. Warrant and Finance Committee ought not to pass, 5 to 1. Sign this 26th day of February, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, too. I guess we're going to make a motion to accept...
Just assign it.
Just assign.
Yeah, that's why I had asked you in the prior meetings what your approval was of the article, so I could have it pre-typed.
Okay, so just make a motion, sign.
Yep, sign the special town meeting.
Sign the special town meeting.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And once again, that'll be March 6 at the, at the Acton Elementary School at 7:00 PM. Okay, Jim, or the Jim.
The Jim. So, I guess two things. This, I originally didn't put this on there because of the insurance company, but I guess that's kind of part of it. We got an email from one of the employee, oh, not employees, one of the volunteers that kind of helps oversee it, Peter, saying that a pulley needs to be replaced in it. There's a broken piece of machine over there and it was about a $35 cost. He said that he could install it if we would pay for the piece, which was $35. So I wasn't sure what you guys wanted to do with that. I mean, we don't have, we don't have a line item for that, not to say you couldn't take it out of building ma, well, building maintenance would be a stretch, because it's not the building, but, I mean, do you want, do you want them to start thinking about their own fundraising? I mean, do you want to start using tax dollar money for it and open it for everybody? We'll put it out there. I know I told you guys this beforehand, but...
Like, yeah, maybe someone's got 35 bucks and want to donate towards it and do it that way.
The young man that wants so badly to use the weight room, the gentleman from Sanford that I told you guys about a couple of weeks ago, we've been going back and forth with the insurance company trying to get permission for him to be there with a, with an adult, and it's opened us up to a lot of other questions, so I'm not sure what the future of the gym based on how we're currently running is going to be anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, is there any, there was at one time a little bit of money sitting in on account.
There was a donations line, but we used that the last time they needed to fix something.
Okay, there's nothing left in that line at all?
Not that I, no.
Okay.
I mean, I will double check 100%. I mean, if there is, you'd be okay spending it, but other than that...
As long as it's in that line, yeah.
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 They would need to fundraise or...
Yeah, fundraise.
Really can't use...
No.
It's pretty hard to use tax money on it, which is too bad.
The Fire Department got the grant originally for all of the equipment. Did they...
I think it was just to purchase the equipment. Robin, do you know anything more about that? I know Sherri Smith, I think, was one that...
She, she wrote up the grant for that.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly how that...
I think it was just to purchase, yeah.
I guess the board's going to have to think about it long-term, because as years go by and time goes by, things are starting to break.
Yeah, and that was back in 2003.
So, you know, we have, you know, they, they asked, you saw the questions. One of the questions was, what do you do when something breaks? But do not, do not use, but at some point they're adding up.
Right.
So if we're going to, you know, take people's money to allow them to use it, something's going to give.
Right, because there's a treadmill that doesn't run.
Right.
And then there's a bike that doesn't...
Which means if you're taking people's money to be able to use the place, you'd think we'd be able to use some of that money to fix the items.
Right.
Well, and, well, and for now, I mean, that money, we set those prices based on what the electrical and heating bills were. I'm not going to say that there isn't any room there, but I mean, I have to double check.
Not much, I know.
Well, and I'm not sure that that's a, that you can use those funds out of a fuel line to fix the equipment, so...
Yep.
I'll talk to Michelle and see what else we can come up with. Hopefully by next week we'll have more information from the insurance company as well, but unless there's money in that donation line...
Yeah, there's not much we can do.
Yeah, it'd be a fundraiser.
I mean, unless the town wants to put a line in there for maintenance, so, you know.
Okay.
Okay. Public comment? Anyone from the public?
Hello, Susan, me, and just wanted to know what your thoughts are about the auditor. Are you still going to not exclude the current auditor?
He wasn't excluded.
Wasn't excluded, the list is drawn out.
Can I ask why?
Honestly, because the treasurer thought it was discrimination. It's what...
Discrimination?
Let me finish, let me just finish. They were mailed, this list of people were mailed the actual RFP. It's not to say when the board gets it in that they can't say, you know, we need a change, it's been X amount of years, but she did not feel like we could purposely not send it to one firm.
You do understand that...
Director, I'm just telling you.
You do understand that it is recommended that you change auditors every five years. If you're worried that the auditor would feel discriminated against, you're creating the problem that they want you to avoid, which is to have such a strong relationship with them that you're afraid to hurt their feelings.
It wasn't, she didn't mean it like that at all. It was discrimi, I mean, it kind of...
You do understand, these companies understand that towns change auditors every few years.
Nobody doubts that, I mean, nobody disagrees with that whatsoever.
So why, why would you not even want to do the right thing and make sure that...
Well, they've all gone out. We'll see what happens when they come back in. Now, I have a question for you.
Yes.
If they come back in and our auditor is...
The lowest price.
Four to $6,000 lower than the next comparable person.
Right.
And we choose to go...
I would say still exclude them.
Okay, so you don't mind if your taxes go up based on what that might be?
And I'll explain to you why, because I actually spoke with an accountant, and they said, every five years you should change auditors. They said also that the town should understand when the new auditor comes in, they're going to be more expensive than the previous one, because that first year that they do it, there's a lot of work, but then the next year, the price will come down and be around the same price that your current auditor is.
Maybe.
So...
So...
But why wouldn't you want to just do the right thing?
We're not saying we don't want to.
We're not saying we're not going to. The bulk is sent out, we'll see what they come back at.
That, and first off, you probably shouldn't always pick the lowest bid.
This is true.
But you need to understand, all the other people that will be putting their bids in will be putting bids in, realizing that first year, their workload will be double of what it would be the following year.
Yep, they're going to have to go back a couple of years and look at what was done and make their, there is a lot of work.
But it's been 14 years that you've had the same auditor.
Yep, yep.
I mean, come on, guys. I'm not going to stop.
I think that everybody agrees with what you're saying in the sense that it's time to look for a new auditor. I mean, we've gone out every three or four years. Nobody, nobody's disagreeing with that. The only question to the treasurer was, is there a legal reason that we could purposely pick out one company and not send it to them? And her thoughts, and that's all I shared with you, her thoughts were that, you know, really, it's like picking the paving company that you've given it to for the last three or four years, we're not going to give it to you just because. We're not going to even let you bid on it. I mean, you've made a lot of valid points that the board should take into consideration when they get them, but just not sending them one just because she didn't find a good reason to not do that, so. It would be no different than if we didn't, just, I mean, just on the flip side of that, if we didn't, if we didn't mail it to them, it's still on the website, so they still could have sent one in.
But I think they understand, these companies that are auditing companies, understand they could lose Acton this year, but they'll pick up soccer.
And everybody, we completely agree with you. We, I completely agree with you. Everything you've said about this is completely true and accurate, and you're right, they do need to make changes, but I was only responding to the part about why we didn't exclude them.
Well...
Either way, it's in the newspaper and it's on the website, so if we didn't personally send them one, they could have still bid.
Yep.
But I want you to keep in mind that...
How many companies did we send it to?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
10, so it's a good, good batch.
I want you to understand, if, say they come in, let's just make the numbers easy. The current company comes in at 10,000, and all the other companies come in around 15, and so you, well, we'll go with the current company. No, no, you should look at the ones that are, that have never even looked at our books.
And we will look at all of them.
You know, but the thing is, the reason why you change auditors is because you don't want to have a relationship with the auditor. The other reason why is you need a fresh set of eyes every five years, and if you have the same person after 14 years still looking at the same books, where is the fresh set of eyes? The other thing is that, I lost my train of thought. I lost my train of thought, but I really wish that you would keep that in mind, especially if you see them at X amount of dollars and everybody else is more, but they're kind of in that same area. You should really look at that price.
Thank you.
We will.
I'm not going away.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Nope, okay. Announcements. Meetings are on the website as usual. The RFP for auditing has been sent out. It's due back here on the 12th of March. Budget workshop on the 16th of March here at the Town Hall. Seeking...